Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 7th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. If you would please first stand for the pledge. The Fledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please just remain standing for one second, just for a moment of silence, the incident that took place last year in Israel. Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda, we got correspondence. We did get some late-breaking memos. Anything on there anybody wants to discuss?
No.
All good.
Good. All right.
Good for me.
Counselor.
No, Mr. Chair.
John.
Nothing here.
Okay, we'll move on to the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2024. Any alterations, additions, changes?
Direction.
Good?
All good?
Good, Counselor. John?
Nothing here, nope.
I have a motion approving the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
We'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda is Dorchester Glen subdivision. This is a request for time extension and reapproval. Location, 1643 Maxwell Drive.
Hello, everyone. Okay, good. We are at the point now, we're just waiting on Health Department approval. We have DEP approval. They're dragging their feet on this, so we need an extension on time.
Anybody have any issues?
No issues.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
John?
Nothing here.
And then do I have a motion for the request for time extension and reapproval of the Dorchester Glen subdivision?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have Home &amp; Heart. This is a request for first one-year time extension. Location, 1750 East Main Street.
Hi. We're on the brink of getting the DEC wetland permit. Apparently, the application fell through the cracks at the DEC and maybe we're, we finally are back on track with that. We expect that to be soon.
Any issues from the board?
Nothing.
Counselor? John?
We have nothing.
Very much. That being said, do I have a motion to approve the first-year time extension for Home &amp; Heart?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night, Joe. Next on the agenda, we have Savannah's Restaurant. This is a decision statement. Location is 3901 Crompton Road.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
I do have a late-breaking memo from Town Engineer Dan Ciarcia. This comparison ditch should be provided. Have you guys seen the memo?
Say that again about the little rivet he wants to put on the right-hand side or something? No.
Anything on the board, then?
I, no.
John, anything on this one?
Not at this time.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
Is Dan here? He ran out. Okay, if there's no issues, do I have a motion to declare lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
One of us, we have a neg deck. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, we've resolved to approving amended site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, permit, and special use permit for outdoor seating at Savannah and Company.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
John?
Thank you, everyone.
Love you guys.
Thank you. Pleasure seeing you.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Curry Honda. This is a public hearing. Location is 3845 Crompton Road. Do I have motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All's in favor.
Aye.
You're on.
Good evening, everyone. Joel Grinberg and Marty Stayskow from Architectural Visions. We've received the comments from the, I guess, the county planning board, the DEC, and the town engineer. We have, only question we had was as far as the town engineer, this, that can be subject to those two items that he had there. That's no problem. As far as the, as far as the, hold on. Yeah, the New York City DEP. There was actually no construction going on here, so we don't see any reason for a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The only thing being done is we're basically improving the building. The whole front is being changed to go with the Honda revisions to all of their dealerships. And we have some permeable pavers for four cars. And we have a tremendously extensive landscape plan, which I think the board has already reviewed. And we've gone to the Architecture Review Board, and they seem to like what we've done. So I see no reason for stormwater pollution prevention plan because we're not doing anything to the site. And the, oh, the only question is from Westchester County. There's a, was a question about the sidewalks. And I'd like to hear from the planning board as to any comments they may have.
Well, I think first and foremost, this is a public hearing. So it's good that we talk about the details from the memos, but this is your opportunity to
Oh, sure.
Talk about the project to the general.
Oh, okay. What's happened now, the Honda organization now is doing a complete renovation to all of their dealerships. Their new, quote-unquote, their new image, which, do you have the elevations? So the public can see that. There we go. Yeah, the colored one? No.
Yeah, it was the next page.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that, that is a new image program. Marty, may we just go on and?
So with the, with the new image program, they have that white band that protrudes out like a canopy. And then the blue band that comes over and forms an arch that comes down. Trying to be a little bit more modern look to it, and then they hang the name Honda. We're actually going to have our entry in the center. That image that is there, they have the entry on the side. We're going to keep the existing entry where it is, so we're not going to change that. So will be a mirror image. We'll have the Honda on the right, and our doors will be in the center. But it'll follow that image.
So basically, this is you redoing the front of the building? You are putting some cars for display out in the grass area? There was some landscaping that was
Yes.
Proposed at the request of the board. Basically, it's a redo of the building. You're not adding any square footage?
Right.
No more impermeable area?
Nope.
Basically, it's a facelift?
Yes.
Did you see Dan Ciarcia did come to the, the meeting again, so? Dan, can you just talk about your concerns in your memo?
Yeah, but just the, the issue that the DEP brought up as well, which I'm kind of confused by because they have approved what we've up to this point called permeable pavers, which have much wider gaps in them. So they were asking for 50%, which at 50%, it don't look like a paver anymore. It's, it's kind of just like going to be like an open web kind of thing to achieve that amount of permeability. So, and that, and that becomes probably a DEP jurisdictional thing because as this, this application is in the designated Main Street area, any impervious will trigger a DEP review. So, so, so the question is provide a detail of what you're using because it just calls it out as permeable pavers. And I guess at this point, we, we should go with the 50%, which will be different than what we've traditionally used that the DEP has previously approved.
Do you see any issues?
No, I mean, the only other thing was about the lighting, which they, they talk about lighting, but there's no information on where, you know, to, at a minimum, was lighting, they're showing it, excuse me, to light up the display cars. So want to know if that's going to be like a blaring thing? Where are they? And whether there's any other site lighting contemplated in terms of poles and or wall packs?
Well, as I mentioned before, from Dan's memo, we will do what the DEP wants, and we'll have 50% permeable. As far as the lighting, this is very
We'll provide details. The, there'll be no additional wall packs. It's just, there'll be low lighting to light up the display cars. Nothing like spotlights going up in the air or anything like that.
It's, you probably need a lighting plan.
Yeah, yeah, we'll provide that.
You're going to provide that, yeah.
This is a public hearing. Anybody have any concerns or comments from the audience? No one? John?
Yes.
We do have REZO and other information. Is that appropriate at this point? Are we hold off?
I think there's a couple of things to just get, we need the lighting plan. So there's a couple of things to, I think, make it a complete package. I think there's some, some details that probably need to be discussed a little bit further.
Especially the other approvals.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're about, we close the hearing, right?
We can, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
You guys have anything else to add?
Nope. As I said, we've, we agree with the memos and that's
Okay, so I would meet with John, Dan, and crew and just work through the details. Okay?
Okay.
So we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Jacob Road Solar. This is a public informational hearing. Location is 1805 Jacob Road. Do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Thank you.
Aye.
Counselor, you're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm Azaren and Steinmetz, here representing the applicant Freestone Renewables, who is the contract leasie of a 15-acre parcel in the town's R1160 zone. The property is known as Featherbed Properties. The app, we are processing a site plan and special permit application to develop and operate a 3.125 megawatt solar farm at this property. We're here tonight for the public information session. With me is Ryan Hutcherston from Freestone, who you know, as well as Nicholas Van Vos from La Bella, the project engineer. Who's getting the materials up on the screen in a second. Although we, we've gone through the site plan with, with your board and the most updated visual analyses, because it's a public information session, we're ready to go through the site plan and some of the visual analyses. We'll take your cue, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as to how many, how many view sheds you'd like us to go through because we know we, we just did this a month ago, but because it's a public information session, we're happy to go through it.
Let me ask, just for show hands, how many people here are actually here for this application? Okay, thank you very much. So I would proceed on.
Okay. So just procedurally, as we're starting to getting, getting the, the materials up, we initially submitted a site plan application, special permit application in February of this year. Initially, the proposal, as the board will remember, was to preserve a 20-foot wooded buffer from the property line inward towards the property and a planting plan of about six feet or so tall trees around the perimeter of the solar farm to, for screening. We've spent the spring and summer and now fall with, with your board going through visual analyses, looking at different angles, looking at mostly the western side of the property, although also the northern side as well, is to make sure that the buffering and screening was adequate enough and really robust enough so that on day one, the panels would be screened. What has resulted is now an 80-foot wooded area buffer from the property line in all around the, the property, as well as a landscaping plan that has 10-foot tall trees, as well as 12-foot tall trees in certain positions where we thought potentially on day one at 10 feet, you may still be able to see a panel or two behind it. We, we increased the, the height or planting height to 12 feet. We will take you through the visual analyses in, in a second or just to summarize it. But I think as a result of that work, we have a, a abundant screening and buffering plan surrounding this property, which I, I know there's been a lot of discussion at the town board level, at the planning board level, about how best to regulate these types of uses. I would respectfully submit that, that this design that we've, we've kind of worked through demonstrates how a properly screened and properly buffered project can, can occur at a location that, that's an appropriate location because of, of the size, because of the topography, et cetera. I was about to turn it over to Nick at, at this point. Let me see, let me see. So I'm just going to draw it for you. Is that okay if I just draw?
I have one question for you. The, the 80-foot buffer that you're just referring to, is that existing tree and underbrush and everything else, or does it need planting?
No, that, that's exist, so the existing, 80, 80 feet of the existing wooded area around the, the property line would be, would be maintained, would just be, would be left open.
Got it.
Or left in place, I should say. Let's just, that's where.
I don't think this would be reversed. Oh, okay, that's open field?
Yep.
We're, okay, I, I got it.
Boy, this is a land use attorney's worst nightmare. Everybody's, not just. Okay. So let me, let me turn it over to, to Nick. Nick, if you want. Nick? Do you want to just go through the slides? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Rather, rather than, rather than the, the initial Yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
We have the, the latest landscaping plan at the very least. We can lock, talk through the site itself and, and the areas in particular where, as David was saying, we've, we've looked to enhance the screening around the, around the site. So just to orient everyone, on this sheet, north is on the left, which means south is right. East is page up, and west is page down. So like David was saying, this, this differs from the originally submitted version quite, quite a bit. The applicant gave back a significant buffer along the, the west and the north. Again, that would be the, the lower side of the image there and the, the left side of the image. We went through a few iterations of the landscaping plan itself. Originally, we were looking at six-to-eight-foot trees around the perimeter of the site, except for the, the south where we do have significant vegetation to remain and no, no homes within several thousand feet to address the concern from the, the west. We raised the tree height. We are now looking at up to a 12-foot planting height for, for some of the, some of the trees along that, that edge. In particular, where we do have in, in reviewing everything with the, with the town planning department, determining where we did have potential line of sight issues. In particular, this was from the, the south, southwest, that, that extreme southwest corner, which again is bottom right on this, on this page, as well as kind of the center, center west, the middle of the page, bottom side, and a little bit along the, the northwest as well. We did provide updated line of sight drawings to the, to the town to show how, how everything is kind of intersected. So Ian, I don't know if you have those queued up. Would you mind flipping to those? Okay, perfect. So this is image J1. This is from the southwest of the site. We have, we've indicated on here where the existing trees to remain will be. The proposed trees, the proposed panels within that, within that section, as well as existing residents from the, from the adjoining property. And this is typical of all the, the line of sites that we, that we prepared. We have a person standing at the property line. Six-foot, six-foot tall person looking out at the panels. And you can see even at, at one year, and on the proposed trees, we have, we've kind of indicated potential growth here. Year one, the height at year five and the, the height at year 15. And so you can see even on year one, the view from the property line is completely intercepted by the proposed vegetation. And again, this doesn't account for any of the vegetation to remain. This is only the vegetation that the applicant is, is proposing. Excuse me a second.
No, well, you, we'll take your cue. Do you want us to keep going cer, certain views or?
I would ask, and I know there's two gentlemen in the back, are there addresses or that you want us to really look at? Are you from the Cortland side or?
We're from the Cortland side.
If you could come up.
Come on up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Could we look at, start with the line of sight drawings?
Is there a certain address?
Well, let's go back to talking about the trees that they're listing there. They're listing Fraser fir and
Oh, I'm sorry. You just got to give us your name.
They're listing Fraser fir and white spruce. Excuse me.
Sorry, if you could just give us your name and address.
Randy Pratt, eight Natalie Court, Cortland Manor. Also the owner of Wilkins Fruit Farm, Yorktown Heights. Okay. So they're, they're growing, supposedly going to plant arborvitae, white spruce, and Fraser fir. On the western side, they're showing Fraser fir and white spruce. Fraser fir will be eaten up by the deer in probably three months' time. I don't know if any of you were here for the hearing before the town board on the modifications to the solar law. I had talked there about the solar law has a one-year inspection clause in it. One year to go out there and check these trees to make sure that they're providing full covering is not going to work, especially with Fraser firs. The deer will eat them up. On these line-of-sight things, they're, they're showing you the line of sight of a six-foot person standing on the property line. That's not the view that the residents from the town of Cortland have of this property. Our houses are located up. We sit on our decks, and that's where we enjoy our backyard and our family. So you're probably 25 feet higher than that. Now, this one shows a rise from the residents and down. That's not how most of those houses are. Most of that property, if you look at the topo, will, goes down from the residents down to the, to the solar field probably, and continue down to the hunterbrook. There's no rises like that. Plus, my house is only 125 feet from the property line. Most of these site drawings that they've submitted show you houses that are apparently 200 to 300 and 400 feet from the property line. I don't think any of them are that far from the property line. So they're, they're, it's not giving you what the people in those residences are really going to see. Okay? Not all of them have trees. The Devuka family who lives next to me, they have no trees from their house to the property line. So putting trees up there to say those trees are existing, that's not true either. Okay? So, so they're misleading on a lot of these drawings, okay? Because the property line slopes down pretty much the whole part. You can go look at other ones as well. And in fact, back in, I believe it was March, there was a La Bella person on Natalie Court taking pictures. I said, what are you, are you working on this solar and the, so he said, oh, yes, I'm working on the solar projected. I said, well, you're standing out here on the end of Natalie Court taking pictures. That's not what the residents see from their homes. I said, you need to come inside my house and come up to my porch and take pictures. He said, okay. So he did. He came inside, he stood on my porch, and he took pictures from, from there of what you see. Okay? Those pictures have never been presented at any of the planning board meetings I've been to. I don't know what happened to those pictures, but he took pictures to see how high you are looking down at this thing. So if putting up a 12-foot tree is not going to help in that situation. There was, I think there was something else in one of the drawings that I saw today. Okay. I can't remember that, but there's no way that this, well, first of all, this is a power plant. This is not, this is not anything like what Patty Peckham put on her property to help with her energy at her stables. This is not like what De Maria put on his property to help with the power at his farm. This is just a power plant, a commercial operation in a residential district. Hopefully, the town board will, during this mor, next moratorium, will reconsider some of these aspects of it. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
No.
Hang on one second.
No, public is on now.
Oh, well, we weren't done with our, with our presentation, but, but Okay.
No, the public is up.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
The gentleman in the back, I think, was, did you want to speak next? Okay.
You're open to the public.
Good evening, Jacob Stein. The applicant proposes to build a 3.125 megawatt commercial solar farm. Who benefits from this commercial phone, solar farm? The full, solar farm most likely, will most likely feed into the Con Ed system. Mr. Cooper's letter of August 28th of this year states in lines three through five of the first paragraph, "Freestone is seeking site plan and special permit approval to facilitate the development of a large-scale solar energy system on the property to provide electrical power to the Yorktown community and its vicinity through a low-impact renewable energy source." Where is the underlying data? Is this in fact the case? What, if the applicant knows, is the peak load in Yorktown from the Con Ed system? If the applicant doesn't know, how can the applicant's attorney state that it will benefit the Yorktown community? Again, what is the load on the Con Ed system in Yorktown? Currently, the installed or approved commercial solar capacity in Yorktown feeding the Con Ed system is 16.54 megawatts. Should Yorktown be saddled with another black industrial glass platter, 15 acres in size? Some data. The population of Yorktown is approximately 35,000 people. The population of Westchester County is approximately 99427,000. The population of Westchester County is approximately nine-hundred-and-ninety-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand people. The population of the Con Ed service area is approximately nine million people. The population of New York State is approximately nineteen-million-five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand people. Yorktown is three-point-five percent of the population of Westchester County. Zero-point-three-eight percent of the population of the Con Ed service area and zero-one-point-one-seven percent of the New York State population. Yorktown again has installed or approved sixteen-point-five-four megawatts of solar capacity. Con Ed has a total of two-hundred-and-fourteen-point-six megawatts of solar capacity. While Yorktown has seven-point-seven percent of Con Ed's solar capacity, while Yorktown only has zero-point-three percent of Con Ed's population. Westchester County has two-hundred-nine-point-nine megawatts of installed solar capacity. Yorktown's sixteen-point-four-five-four megawatts represents seven-point-eight-eight percent of Westchester's solar capacity while only having three-point-five percent of the county's population. New York State has five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine megawatts of solar capacity. Yorktown's sixteen-point-five-four megawatts represents zero-point-two-eight percent of the state's solar capacity while only having zero-point-one-seven percent of the state's population. Where will this power be utilized? If for New York City, there are numerous locations to build sold, solar farms on New York City property. The decommissioned Ridgewood Reservoir is ninety acres in size. The decommissioned Jackie Onassis Reservoir is a hundred-and-seven acres in size. The decommissioned Silver Lake Reservoir in Staten Island is also of significant size. The Hillview and Jerome, Jerome Park Reservoir are slated to be covered. Hillview being ninety acres and Jerome Park being ninety-four acres. They are both large sites. The de- decommissioned Fountain Avenue Landfill is four-hundred-and-seven acres in size. The decommissioned Pelham Bay Landfill is eighty-nine acres in size. The decommissioned Fresh Kills Landfill is twenty-two-hundred acres in size. The town of Yorktown should not bear the burden of industrial black glass platters covering acres of land to benefit the downtown community or the city of New York. My sources of information, the town of Yorktown, the Con Ed website, the NYSERDA website, and the United States Bureau of the Census. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Strauss, fifty-eight-year resident. I'm not as detailed as Mr. Kopstein. Uh, it seems like this is deja vu all over again. Two years ago or three years ago, uh, I stood up here and talked with, uh, two or three other people why you shouldn't put solar in Jefferson Valley, on Foothill, and they're disasters. Someone showed the town board pictures of, of the Foothill where they have, and I know that, again, remembering, am I supposed to use clear cut? About fifteen-hundred trees. I know these aren't the same things as this particular project, but at the time, two or three years ago, the same thing I said I do not want to see in-ground commercial solar in residential areas. And I know that there are things going on now with moratorium possibly, but I cannot comprehend how you would consider continuing to do this to the town of Yorktown. Mr. Murphy said he's lived here sixty years, if I'm not mistaken, the other night. And he said it used to be farmland. Well, see, I was here fifty-eight years ago and I remember it then, but now there are a lot of trees. But there are still neighborhoods. It's a town where people live. Why would you consider putting commercial solar in neighborhoods where people live? This even says here, I believe, Colangelo subdivision. When I hear or see a word subdivision, doesn't that mean housing? Yes?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Housing.
Yes.
Yes. Not solar. Subdivision. I'm tired of people trying to come in here and change the character of this town. There's a housing crisis. Oh, well, what about the housing? Why aren't they putting sixty housing units on this subdivision? Cause they don't want to. They wanna put solar. We don't need this in Yorktown. I am all for solar in appropriate places in commercial zones. I have no issue with that. And there are plenty of examples of it all over. And again, if a person wants to put it on their house, I have no issue with that. But when people come in and they try to change the character and the nature of the town of Yorktown for monetary gain, I am not for that. Number two, screening. I talked about that three, four years ago. And I talked more recently at the Dell. There's a Dell project, Dell Avenue project, and I talked at length about that. And I don't mind saying it again, uh, Mr. Steinmetz talked at that meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, he tried to spin the, the screening law. The gentleman in the back, Wilkins Farm, he talked the other night. It's, screening, doesn't matter how many trees, are they gonna be alive? I said that three years ago, but I got hell for it. At another meeting, at another meeting, not here, at a board meeting, a town board meeting. You don't wait for a year. Every month, two months, three months. Who says the trees are gonna be alive? And who says the energy is even gonna benefit the town of Yorktown? There's no proof of that. It goes on a grid. I learned that a couple, few weeks ago. Goes on a grid. We don't know it's gonna benefit Yorktown. So you have two issues. You have a developer wanting to come in and put something in a town where it doesn't, it should not be in the zone that they're looking to do, and they're trying to spin the screening. How many trees? You're talking about six, six-foot tree, eight, I'm six, I'm, there used to be six feet. I'm not six feet anymore. Five-ten now. I, six feet trees? And, and if homes are above in Jefferson Valley, there are homes on the hill, they can see that. But I know that you can't, you can't, it's not finite. But it really is finite. If those people in Cortland can see this project, it's not right. That's just the screening, but it's not right to have this continual onslaught into the town of Yorktown for the benefit that is questionable. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call up Nick for a sec? That's right?
Yeah.
Hey. Hi, Nick. So just so we get an understanding, especially for the gentleman you're here from Cortland. So when you went out and your group prepared these profiles, and I believe a lot of this was done, um, in coordination with the planning department. So when you plotted out these profiles, you used the topography that you had in place, right?
Uh, yeah, the topography is a, a blend of sources. We did the onsite topography. Our, our survey team did the onsite topography. Everything offsite is based on publicly available LiDAR data.
So did you use Westchester County Planometrics or anything of that sort?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's all sourced, uh, from the county, yeah.
Okay. So the, from our perspective here, we're to believe that the grade that you show on these various profiles is accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And the situation with the homes that you show on these profiles, I would assume that your engineers went out there and kinda estimated the heights of these homes?
So the homes are all, um, uniform in the images that we have here just because we simply could not, um, cannot accurately measure the houses without getting onto people's property to, uh, right. So the, the eve height on each one of these homes is twenty feet above existing grade, but it's literally just a cookie cutter on each one of those sheets. It's all the same. But that way, it's consistent, you know, twenty-foot eve height, um, so you're able to, uh, at least. Correct, yes. David's reminding me that the location of each house is not, um, the same on each. That, that is all measured accurately, uh, based on the aerial image.
Right.
Essentially, yeah.
So you, you plot out the, the footprint of the house.
Mm-hmm.
You, from the field, kinda get a estimate of where the roof height is and you plot that on your, on these profiles.
Right, so the, the right edge of each one of those images, uh, the right edge of the house in each of these images is, um, based, uh, that, that is, uh, approximated from the aerial image, that, you know, the, the distance from there to the, the property line, essentially.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the height, again, is just, we, we just assumed a twenty-foot eve height, just, you know, roughly, um, uh, uh, you know, similar for a, a typical, typical for a, a residential home, I would say.
And the trees you show in the buffer, that's just, uh, kind of a, an image you put in there just to kinda demonstrate that area, right?
That, that's based on the aerial imagery, um, literally just looking at everything in plain view.
Right.
Uh, just, uh, uh, you know, in a approximation of, uh, of what would be, what would remain, um, you know, on the neighboring side of the property as well as our side of.
Right, in terms of, in terms of the, the width and where that, that trees, where those trees are located, that's accurate, so.
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah. Where, where the trees are located, yes. That, that's all based on the aerial image. The, the height actually comes, again, from the, the LiDAR data. Um, they actually have two different values published. One is, uh, first return, meaning, um, the, uh, the, the height of the, the, the leaf height essentially on these trees. And then the, the other is the, the ground elevation. So the, the height is approximated from, uh, from LiDAR and like the, the left and right is, is, uh, from an aerial image.
And in reference to the, the gentleman in the back, um, number eight it was. Do we have that in a profile? That's J eight.
We should have there, yes.
J four? I don't know if we have that one.
Yep. Uh, so yeah, J four is, uh, from the, the Pratt residence.
Okay, so the house location, again, and I believe I'm not, I don't wanna misquote you, but you said, "Most of the grades do not go up before going down." Thought we, you can come back up.
Is he saying that's my house?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Yes.
My property doesn't go up.
Right, no one's gonna hear you if you don't come up here.
From my house, well, first of all, how many, you're saying my house is a hundred and, um, seventy-five feet from the line there? If you go look at your other drawing, you'll see that you've marked my house like a hundred and twenty-five feet from the line. So your two drawings don't agree. But then, if you'd like to come to my house, my house, from the back of my house, slopes down. There is never a rise in any place from my foundation, from my first-floor foundation to that, their fence. Or my fence, really.
Your house is the one they, they've outlined there?
That's correct.
Okay.
It does not rise at all. Everybody is welcome to come there and I'll show you. You can walk it and look at it. You know, they're, they're also talking about cutting down a thousand trees here. I'd like to know, is that a thousand trees from now? Or does that include all the trees that have been cut down in the last two years? You can look at the Westchester County parcel viewer at the aerials and you can see how much trees have already been cut down on this parcel.
Yeah, this, this parcel was originally, and was in front of us for a subdivision.
I realize that.
And that was.
I know that.
Sitting with, and obviously, things since then have changed. But, so in respect to this, which is J five, Nick, four?
So, and then, now you can look at the next house to the left of me, the Davukas' house. See, there's not a tree there between their house and the fence. And remember, my house is a, is a high ranch, so my living space is on the second floor. Davukas' is the first floor, but then the next house is David Kasdan, who's sitting in the back. He's a high ranch. He's upstairs.
So I think the buffer they're showing is not the property buffer? That's not on your property? It's that wooded from the property line to their proposed landscape, right?
No, that's not how he's depicts, he's showing, well, but he's also showing that you're standing on the fence line and looking down, and that's not where we look. We stand on our deck and we look down.
I hear you. I'm just, I hear you. I'm just trying to get to the, how they came up with this profile. And you've called out things that, and you live there, so you're very intimate with the property. You're saying that there's no slope up before sloping down?
Absolutely not.
All right, so, and that's what we're trying to get to here.
Okay.
So we're here to gather information.
Absolutely not. And if you look at the topos, they're, I don't, I looked through the topos this afternoon. I don't think you have any sort of a rise between any of the homes and their property line. Most of those houses on either Natalie or on South Gate, um, I think they're probably located about five-twenty. They're, they're showing the ray there at like four-eighty maybe on most of them. But if you could look at the whole topo, you'll see that the land slopes down. There's, there's not a rise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you could.
Yep.
So the, just forgetting this solar in this area, do you wanna talk about what benefits and?
Did you, you read my notes? Cause that, that was, that's where I was going to.
There's a camera in the mic.
It's, right. Let, let, let me just.
Yeah, do your thing.
Finish, finish that off for a second. So look, um, the, the, the suggestion that the county's topography is off on this, I would suggest having your staff and, and your experts take a look at it as well. This is based on the county.
No, we need it based on a field, not other stuff.
So, uh, again, not to cut you off, but when we have these public informational, which are unique to Yorktown, right? This is just the first flush to get this out to the public so that we do get this feedback and so that we can look deeper into the details. So, yes, the county has these maps that you can look at. But again, the residents are very intimate with their properties and, again, the, I'm not saying government's wrong, but sometimes we do have a.
All I'm, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is the suggestion was as if we, we were somehow messing with, with the, with the data to somehow show a difference.
I think he's just saying what is on there might be inaccurate from what's in the field. I don't think there's any accusatory.
Okay, as long as you don't see it that way.
Yes, statement of facts.
So let me, let me go to, to the benefits, cause.
So, let me, let me go to, to the benefits, 'cause two speakers, we're, we're talking about benefits.
Yeah.
So, let's step way back for a second, right? From, from an environmental standpoint. Climate change is a reality, right? I mean, it's supposed to be ninety degrees in, in Nebraska on, on Friday, right? Uh, Lincoln, Nebraska on Friday, and the second of two major hurricanes is about to hit Florida this week. Um, I don't think you can stand up here and say, "Look, it, it, it's all, it's, it's not gonna happen, you know, we don't, we don't have to, to focus on, on, on renewable energy or somehow changing the amount of fossil fuel and carbon that is thrown into the, to the atmosphere on a daily basis in the United States or frankly, in the entire world," right? So, start from there. Um, solar energy is a critical piece, particularly in New York State, of getting us off fossil fuel. We all know about New York State's goals, and I, 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 I watched the town board meeting. I couldn't be there, I watched town board meetings. Some people were saying that we don't care about the state, you know, look. The issue is whether or not you agree with the state's goals, right? They have identified that we need ten thousand megawatts of distributed solar. Now, with distributed solar are projects like this. So, in other words, you're not talking about your commercial roof, roof solar. So, you know, on a car dealership, you put, you put, you put some, some solar panels on top of the parking lot. That's not, that is far less than the three point one-two-five megawatts that would be generated. You're not talking about personal solar that goes on, on your roof, 'cause that's only, only servicing your own house. That's not going into the grid, right? What we really need is a system of distributed solar. Ten thousand megawatts is what the goal is by 2030. We are at fifty-seven hundred right now. Now, now, uh, I think it was Jay had brought up, look, there's only sixteen point five-four megawatts right now, I think it was in Yorktown, and two hundred megawatts or so total in, in Con Ed. So, step back for a second. If we're at fifty-seven hundred with those numbers, it's not as if any community in, in, in the Hudson Valley, Yorktown, I live in Lewisboro, any, any, anywhere can just say, "Look, we, we've had enough." It's not, we are, we are so far away from being at the point where it's actually making a difference that projects like these do benefit everybody. Now, I understand, fine, all right, so that's, that's, that's a, that's a general benefit. Let's keep on going. Local benefit. The electrons that are generated do go to the system. But like anything, when, like, like, like a pump system, they're going to end up in Yorktown homes because it's not, it goes into the grid, it's not gonna make it to New York before, to New York City before it goes, it goes into your homes as long as you are on this grid. Um, so, the idea of saying, "Look, it's not benefiting Yorktown communities," it will. Now, there are studies out there that say that once enough of these types of distributed solar go online, it will start bringing down your electrical costs. I'm not gonna stand up here and say, "You approve this project and your, your bills are gonna go down," right? But the idea is more projects like these in local communities, it will make a difference. So, yes, it's a drop in the bucket with respect to what, what you're, what you would be seeing now, but it would be a benefit.
I, and I, I think what, what, part of what you're saying is the current New York State administration is pushing by a certain deadline that New York State is gonna be off fossil fuel. On top of that, you have Indian Point and other, you know, major power plants getting shut down, and part of the planning process is infrastructure, right? No different than water, sewer, electrical, it's all part of the, the planning process. And unfortunately, um, we've now got these solar farms that are all over the place, right? They're coming fast and fierce. And I do wanna say, we don't draft the zoning. We are asked by the town board, when they are, like, with the solar and the battery moratorium, we're asked for, or any input we have, and we give them input back. But at the end of the day, the zoning is kinda set by the town board. So, we get applications and we review them as submitted. Um, but with this, and I understand, you had what was a proposed subdivision, where you're gonna be looking at houses, and now the property owners decide to shift gears, and now we have a proposed solar farm. And I get it, you know, you got residents there that are looking at what was woods, and now you're gonna have a massive solar farm next to it. And again, we all understand it, we all live here, um, and we all see what's going on out there. Um, but we do review the application as submitted. And I will tell you that one of our biggest concerns, and it always has been, as it is in the code, is the visual impact, right? So, it's supposed to be invisible from the residents. Um, and we've had this on other applications. So, when someone says, you know, that they're on their deck, and when they're enjoying, you know, uh, maybe dinner out on the deck, and they're looking out and they could see the solar, I think that is concerning with the code. Certain, certainly some of these, I'm sure, topography that the state or the, the county has might be off a little bit. You know, it's something that, now that we know about it, we could have certain areas field-verified. We could check. I'm sure the planning department or the engineer might go out with them just to verify some of these things. But we really have to deal with the nuts and bolts on the ground with these things. And that's, I think, what the planning department and Labella, which did very nice, uh, profiles here, was trying to do. Now, they're perfect, nothing's perfect, but as we hear from people, that's what we work with. So, we'll take this as a public informational, we'll take all the information we gather, and then we're gonna give the applicant, uh, things that we wanna see. I do wanna remind everybody that there still is a moratorium, and the applicant is aware of this. So, everything moving forward is at risk. The town might change everything, and this, oop, sorry, Tom, this application might be out the window. So, this is at a risk to the applicant. Um, but as we move forward, the details we get or the information we get, we will have them verified and checked.
That's fine.
Chair, can I?
Yes, please.
Just a point of information is that I don't believe that the property owner is abandoning the subdivision.
Yeah, I, I was just about to say...
Still, part of it is the sub, right?
So, the housing that was proposed will be going there, uh, except for one lot. And also recall that the area in which this, uh, array is being placed is the area that was planned for the community farming plots.
Right.
Right. John, John beat me to it, it is...
I saw your notes in the picture that I...
Hey, I know, so I gotta, I gotta start facing it a different way. Um...
And just, so, we did bring that up, and that's why you have the buffer on the other side.
On the other side, right. Just, and just so it's clear, so, so, the Colangelo subdivision is going forward. As part of the review, this lot was always out there, and as, as John said, was contemplated for farming. I think the applicant at, at one point was either here, or the town board also said potentially a solar farm. We weren't part of that application, so I don't know what was represented there. But the, the, this parcel has always been for further, for the development. Now, if, if you just look at the benefits from a farm versus a solar, going back to the benefits of the project, this, yes, this project is removing, I think someone asked, how many, how many trees are being removed? Uh, eleven, eleven hundred forty-one trees are being removed. We did a, a survey, and the survey's in the record, eighty-five of those trees are, are dead trees. So, we're talking about ten thousand, uh, sorry, uh, a thousand fifty-six living trees. The applicant, right now, is proposing to plant seven hundred and eighty-two trees, all right? So, so, the differential is about two seventy-five, right? So, so, that, that's what you're, what you're talking about. If you compare that with any other development in general, it's probably what you're looking at anyway. But forget about those numbers, just talking about the difference from a carbon sequestration, uh, 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 comparison? So, the project, using the EPA, I think, uh, Jay was, was talking about sources. This is right from the EPA website. The EPA has a calculator that they've developed that allows you to determine, okay, if I cut down X amount of trees and I replace that with solar, how much, uh, tons of carbon, metric tons of carbon am I removing from the atmosphere annually? In our case, it's three thousand one hundred and three metric tons annually would be removed from the atmosphere. That, that's a big number. When you compare it to what's being removed from the atmosphere right now from those eleven, eleven hundred forty-one trees, seventeen point eight-nine metric tons annually. So, it, it's a, it's an exponential difference when you look at, um, the environmental benefit of the, what's, what's going there versus what's being removed. Now, compare that with, with, with farming, if you're just clearing it and not... You said you weren't gonna call me names. You said you weren't gonna call me names.
Time to give medication to the dog.
Icebreaker.
Okay. Um, you compare that with, with, with what, the, the farming use, you don't get that carbon sequestration. So, there's another benefit. The other benefit I just wanna, don't wanna go without saying is the tax benefit, the local tax benefit, right? This use is going to generate probably about a million or so dollars in tax revenue from this, from the site because of this use without any schoolchildren, you know, without any traffic trips, without any, any, any demand, recreational demand on, on town resources, right? That's gone right into your coffers with, with my, very little cost back. That's a significant benefit. Finally, because of the subdivision, yes, this project will facilitate the subdivision, both financially and also from, from a planning perspective, right? Right now, the way that it's laid out, you would get the four houses, but you also get the trail, you get, you get the, the connection between the Hunter Brook that, that, you know, they're proposing a, a trail there as it's laid out now. That's all sort of one package here. So, so, the, the benefit of the subdivision, I think someone was talking about, by the housing crisis and, and building more homes, you get that along with the, the solar farm. When you put all that together, my, my, my final pitch would be, you know, environmental review is not a siloed review. It's not just, okay, how many trees are we, are we removing? It's weigh the costs and the benefits and, and overall, what does this project bring? I would submit that the overall benefits, whether it be globally, nationally, statewide, or locally, uh, far outweigh, um, the, the potential detriment of the tree removal and, yes, developing this, this portion.
It's just like with anything, you know, change is inevitable, it's the only constant. And, you know, you've got, a few years back, we had a tree law put in, very protective of trees. Now, we have the solar, and they all conflict with each other, right? Which is the right way to go? And, you know, again, New York State is pushing this deadline with being off fossil fuels. It's, it's a very difficult balance.
Yeah.
And then you get, you know, very opposing views, you know, so...
Well, before we go much further, um, I happened to notice, going, just going back to something rather technical here, the affidavit of mailing seems to have missed one of the adjoining property owners?
I'm unaware of that, yeah.
Uh, I wasn't, until I was looking at the map, but I think you missed Cohen from your, uh, list of mailing, uh, interested parties. So, I'm not quite sure, maybe, um, if that's true, what we have to do.
Renote it.
We have to renotice the public hearing.
Okay.
We'll check into it. I mean, there's, there's, it has to be a public hearing down the line anyway, so, you know, it's...
Well, I'm just talking about this one.
You know, in other words, I'm not saying re-noticing is fine, it's, you know, it's...
Okay.
We need to.
Oh, I, I was first.
Just to briefly restate, Mr. Cooper's a hundred percent right. Electrons move. We have sixteen point five-four megawatts. How many of those electrons currently stay in Yorktown? What is the Con Ed system load in Yorktown? If it's more than sixteen point five-four, then they stay in Yorktown. If it's less than sixteen five point five-four, then they go elsewhere. So, if the applicant has any information, let him bring it forth. Let him bring the data forth. If not, let him go back to Con Ed, which is going to be purchasing this energy, and get the information from Con Ed. Does Con Ed have that information? Yes, they do. How do I know? Because I know what it is, but because of confidentiality, I can't bring it up at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Susan Segal. Um, just a procedural, it's not a question as much as a thought. Um, we've heard presentations about this applicant for maybe about a year, okay? And I think it's, it's pretty close to a final, a final, a final public hearing. Um, most of the issues have been resolved, other than checking out the topo kind of thing. The town board, as you know, is going to extend the moratorium, okay? The, the public hearing, I think, will be set in October twenty-second. Looks like it's going to be, I think, a six-months moratorium. The applicant has understood that he's at his own risk, but he already knows that the town board was thinking of a two-hundred-foot setback, and at the last meeting, he said that would make a serious change in his project. Also, the other, there are other issues that the town board may consider in changing. So, I'm just wondering, going forward, over the next six months, what else is there to talk about, about this application, once you close tonight's hearing? 'Cause as you said, Yorktown is unique in this early informational hearing. But honestly, I don't see, I mean, the applicant can always come here, and you'll be here, and I'll be here, but is there anything to be gained by more presentations about a plan that may change? Because I don't know, um, how long it's gonna take the town board to adopt the new law. So, I'm just, you know, it's, it's something for you to consider, but it's the applicant to consider.
No, and, and you're, you're, you're accurate, um, but again, if someone comes to us with an application, again, we listen to it on its merits.
Yeah.
The moratorium doesn't stop us from processing these applications, that's the way it's written.
I, I know, but it just seems that we're just gonna be...
I'm sorry. Can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Don't bother with it."
I'm not saying you have...
The law says we have to proceed if the applicant signs the waiver and they go forward.
But, and also, information and work, especially with the engineers, it's not done quickly.
Yeah.
So, if we get information that, or things we have to check, again, I'm sure, uh, Labella isn't gonna be out there tomorrow checking things. It might take a month, two months, and in that time, I guess we'll see what happens, but at least we could field-verify some of the consent.
Well, I think, yeah, that, that's an issue that has come up.
This hearing is probably gonna have to be repeated.
If it is, in fact, yes, so...
We'll see the same things, I guess it's just, just a sense of frustration, thank you.
I just, we'll, we'll get to everybody, I promise.
Uh, one thing strikes me for sure. Um, the attorney, Mr. Cooper, mentioned, um, a county map. I would think that to go through all these drawings, unless I'm mistaken, that they would've done this based on going out to the property line and looking at the houses, where they're situated, and to see if there's a rise, again, unless I'm mistaken, uh, using a county map? Is that the topography? Not on that one, but the other one that shows the sloping?
I, I think what they said is they used various...
I thought he said the county.
Well, part of it, I think they use the, their own survey, which is of the property development, and then others. I had mentioned, they, when they said county, I know county has planometrics that you'd use, 'cause we use them where I work.
But there's, there's a, the other photo shows a specific, it shows a specific. So, how can you go on different things? It's either yes or no.
They should all match up, right? Surveying is a pretty exact science, so...
Okay.
But, again, if you look at even GIS maps, and I could use where I work, the lines are not perfect.
I understand that.
So, you have to take different things and...
No, but, but if you have a slope, I mean, it's either cut and dry, it's cut and dry. It's either a slope or there's no slope.
Well, out in the field, I would agree with you.
Yeah.
But when you start dealing with...
Well, they shouldn't have, shouldn't they have been in the field to, to bring that information, correct information here to a public informational hearing?
You would think that the information was accurate, but again...
I, well, I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, I'll also, um, point out that three years ago, an attorney for the Foothill property, and it's on the record, he got up and he said, "If you don't approve the solar, I'll go back to housing." You remember that?
Oh, I remember.
Oh, yeah. So, it just seems that this is, like, weird. It's... It's a game that property owners and developers are playing with solar and housing. When they get up here about the solar, it's, oh, it's much better than housing. And then when the housing guy says, oh, this is much better than solar. And it seems that the attorney is an advocate for Governor Hochul. Because I said the other night, and I'll finish now, because I don't want to keep talking forever. I said the other night at the town board meeting, I don't give a darn whether Governor Hochul wants it done in 25 or 30. Don't do it here in a residential zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, George Campolo, Old Crampon Road.
How you doing?
I don't want to take away from my neighbor's very serious concerns, but something I'm going to mention, just to put on your radar, radar screen, is a concern. Radio frequency interference from solar systems. I happen to be a ham radio operator. This does not affect just me. If there are defective, poorly designed, or poorly installed systems and components, there can be very strong radio frequency interference that will affect the AM broadcast band. So your Yankee game, NPR, Sean Hannity, whatever, WFAN, also shortwave radio, if you're listening to Radio Iran or whatever from your country, if you're living here, and arc, arc frequencies as well. So I just wanted to put that on the radar screen. I have a little information here, eight copies. There's an entity known as the American Radio Relay League, which is the ham radio equivalent of the NRA for gun owners. And they actually have an RFI engineer. I can tell you that many of the hams that I've spoken to throughout the country have had horrible experiences with just a neighbor on a single-family house putting in a solar system that left them unable to hear. So it's just something, I think, to not, to not have the problem come about, and then the FCC has to get involved. And I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Thank you.
Can I just say, does technology exist to do it in a way that doesn't create such interference?
That would be a question for this engineer. My understanding is there's a great variation in the type of panels and inverters and such, and grounding, and there's a lot to it. Grounding and the length of the cables that connect the panels to the inverters. And it's, it's above my pay grade.
Okay.
But, but there is an engineer that can be reached and, or you can consult another engineer who might know. But it can be a problem.
Okay. Thank you for bringing your attention.
Thank you. Good point. Go ahead.
How you doing?
Came here kind of late, but I'm a construction manager, so I dug into drawings, so it's going to be somewhat factual.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My review.
Name.
Was that 1767 Jacob Road?
What was your name?
Jay Levy.
Hi, Jay.
How you doing? Fire suppression. I didn't see anything in the drawings about transformer sizing, battery storage quantity, how you're handling fire suppression. I think there's a lot of documented information about fires. Ignition, lithium, anybody you've seen on the news, a Tesla lights up, takes forever to put it out. So now we're talking about putting a megawatt power facility with battery storage right next to a Hunter Brook Preserve with wild light habitat in it. I see it all the time, right? I have a rear property, it's all wooded. I walked back there occasionally, saw that they surveyed the land, you know? It's, it's very active. So, so what's the plan for that? What equipment sizing? Has there been an acoustical analysis done on that equipment? You have heavy step-up transformers. You're talking about high voltage power, have to send it across. How do you do that? You got to step it up, right? So you got to have high transformers to do that, that produce acoustical interruptions to the area. It's a fact, right? All of those things, I didn't see anything in there about that. Has there ever been any studies about that? LaBelle's a civil engineer, he's not digging into that. Who's digging into it? Who's giving that information? Haven't seen it. Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of my chief concern, right? Simulation-wise, it says the electric lines are going to be buried. The simulation graphics show overhead. So I don't know if that's an error. It happens. I've seen drawings, details don't match up, but clearly an inconsistency in the design. So how are we handling that? What's the final approach, right? Not clear to me. So that's something that definitely has to be flushed out. Yeah, I mean, those are the bigger ones, right? The work hours I saw on there are ridiculous, working till 11:00 PM. Got to be kidding me. I've never been authorized to do that in my entire, you know, career in construction. You know, whether it's down in New York City and Rye where I am right now, Newarkshire where I am right now, right? So that certainly needs to be looked at if any construction moves forward, frankly. Also didn't see, you know, there, there probably should be a merged plan for the solar and the subdivision of the housing, because it's not clear to me. There was also a wetland shown on there, no buffer zone around it. I went through the wringer mitigating my wetland, which is a Class B. Had to pay 70 grand to, to reinvigorate this wetland. Meanwhile, there's no buffer zone on those drawings, so there's none. It's hard for me to believe. John, you've been to my property when we went through that whole effort, right? Lot of money I got, I spent on that, which probably, it wasn't even an identified wetland. It wasn't, it was debatable, in my opinion, whether it was or not. We did it, right? So that clearly needs to be reevaluated, in my opinion. So just a couple of concerns, in addition to everything everybody else has brought up. I'm not going to repeat all that, but clearly some, some due diligence still needs to be done here for risks to the community and to the habitat, for sure. So.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Not again.
Just two things. One, I was not notified, and my name is not in the affidavit either. So we did not get any mailing on this.
Okay.
For this hearing tonight. So that may void the whole thing. But in any event, there was a time, a couple of months ago, where Mr. Cooper had stated that, and I, I think the board was mentioning, well, maybe you should look to put the solar or some other place. Yes, we need the solar, you know, on rooftops, on top of the old Calder's building, or over the parking lots, like in Cortland or something. And Mr. Cooper said, well, there's not just enough areas to do that, but we don't know, because we haven't used those areas first. And in your, in the ordinance, as it was originally drafted, there is a priority that's listed there that is a directive to you as the board as to where you should be placing solar, okay? And this type of land is the last priority. You should be looking at other areas first.
I want to correct you just real quick. We do not pick what comes to us. We do not choose where the solar goes. We review what comes to us. It's like I read online, another pizzeria is coming, or, it is not us.
I realize that, Mr. Chairman. No, no, that's true, yes. You don't pick, you don't pick the jobs. You don't pick them. But when you select them or you approve them, you have the ability to, as the ordinance has given you, that you do it by priority. And maybe that will be a change when the town board is finished, that they will put teeth in that part of it. So it'll give you that ability to say, no, we can't do it here on a wooded lot. But if you'd like to go over there and cover the Calder's parking lot, we're good.
Maybe that'll come?
Let's hope so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you don't come up here, no one's going to hear you, and then Tom in the back is going to yell at us.
I forgot to mention what I really, I came down because of Curry, because I'm near Curry Honda with their solar thing.
That wasn't in front of us tonight. Only the redo of the facade.
I thought it was earlier, and I missed it.
The redo of the facade. That's a different application.
Okay, I thought I saw it on.
Two different applications.
Sorry.
No problem. Anybody else?
Okay.
Okay. Counselor, you got anything else, or?
No, I mean, we were taking some notes here, so, so we will respond to some, some of the comments, certainly about the, the design and some of the things that are in.
I know you will.
Okay. Unless there are any other questions, we can be back to.
No.
Counselor? John?
Nothing at this time.
The motion to close the public informational hearing.
Motion.
Second?
No, no.
I'm not sure.
No, you got to, you got to adjourn it, we got to renotice.
Well.
So adjourn it?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Fall in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Well, okay, I guess it doesn't matter for this, but if we're going to renotice, we're going to need a new, new date. So we just need, we need a date from the board as to when they would do it. That's, that's why I was saying.
Work out the detail.
You just tell me when it is.
All right.
Battery?
What's that?
Battery.
Yeah.
Before we hit that, what did the town board, where's the town board at on batteries?
Did you guys enact anything on moratorium? Not yet, okay.
So right now, we're in a moratorium?
On batteries.
Batteries.
Okay. Did you guys execute a waiver letter then?
It was just adopted, and we're happy to execute the waiver letter as, as prepared by the town.
All right, let me first say we have RIC Development Battery Storage. This is a discussion site plant, it's all right. 3666 Old Yorktown Road. How are you?
Good evening. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder, on behalf of Rick Energy. We're here simply for a pre-preliminary application this evening. We submitted a number of documents, including the site plan, the EAF, and the forms, as well as the fee. I have with me this evening, Mr. Andy Welch, who's a professional engineer. He's the senior project manager for Rick Energy, and he has a short PowerPoint to run you through, just to give you a flavor of the application. We do understand the moratorium allows the processing with the understanding that we're proceeding at our own risk under the moratorium, and, and we consent to that. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
You got, please. If you want to come up?
No.
No?
Point of order?
What is a point of order? No, all right, I take that back.
You haven't moved into work session, but you could if.
We forgot to do that.
Where, wait a second.
You haven't technically moved into work session, but.
It's a work session.
Oh, my God, it was on the last page. John Paul Thomas. So we are, so we have a motion to move into the work session.
Motion. Second.
All right, so during the work session, we don't, I'm sorry, I think we're still in the public. You see, look what he did.
It's right there.
Testing me. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. As Rob said, I'm Andy Welch. I'm here representing the project as a developer. I have with me in the back Alexa Moreno, who's our environmental and affairs permitting project manager, and Christina Zalisi, who is from Langen Engineering. There are the engineers of record on this project. Basically, just to go through who Rick Energy is, we are an internationally, international energy company doing green energy throughout the world. We're located on four continents. Been around for about 20 years now. We are a, are US-based. We're based in New York, New York City address, but we are actively for about a dozen years in the United States. Company within the United States focusing on, solely on, on domestic issues. We develop different technologies and renewables throughout the, the entire country. Large, most of our activity, though, is in New York State, in the upstate region, and developing projects there. Very briefly, we're talking about here is, is what we're calling the Yorktown Energy Storage System, or Yorktown ESS Project. As you said, it's 3666 Old Yorktown Road in Shrub Oak. Property is owned by Carmella and Daniel Provizi. They are leasing us a, a part of their property. Their property includes their residence, which is, basically makes up the western side of the property. It's, the whole thing is a former commercial nursery, which you can tell I'm an engineer, because I can't spell, as I noticed that, an apology for that. The, it's got a wooded area, commercial, I spelled wrong, if you're looking.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
If you're, you're looking at, you see the pond in a wooded area to the north, the iconic Parkway, kind of on the east and, and south portion of it. The property is owned a mix of commercial and residential. We, it's difficult to tell from the map, but we believe we're in the commercial zone by that, the boundary. Existing conditions on the, of the property, as you can see, there is an existing driveway. The house, they have a pool in the back, where there's wetlands up onto the, kind of the, the upper right hand corner of that, of the property that we needed to avoid, as well as a buffer zone. So you'll see we come down out of that adjacent, and just to mention that the photograph on the bottom is that there is an existing access, commercial access going back to its time as a, functioning as a nursery. The, the project itself is five-megawatt battery storage project using the Megapack 2XL, the newest technology on the market. It's, it's designed to discharge that five-megawatts over a four-hour period, basically to make up for peaking power at, at the highest load periods of, of the, of the local distribution area. 24-hour remote monitoring of it, there's nobody actually necessary to be located at the facility, though it's, it's monitored closely at all times. The, about 200 feet to the nearest other residential property line off the Provizi property, and it connects into existing distribution lines. There's no new electrical conductors, transmission, distribution lines associated with the project. You see, the interconnection is tough to read on, on this picture, but we come into a new underground manhole to connect to the Con Edison system. They run the power underneath Old Yorktown Road and then up onto their overhead pole system. So there is no new poles associated with this, this type of interconnect. You kind of talked about what the, the project benefits is. It supports the, the local distribution network to provide power when, when there's a big draw from it. The town will, will get the tax revenues, not, not a lot of additional requirements to the town on it. It supports our, our goal is, talked about it, it's different to, for, for New York to get to its, its green renewable goals. And one of the things about the battery storage is it's very small. You know, we're taking up, you know, well less than an acre of land in order to, that can make it so you don't need peaking power plants, and you don't need to bring new transmission lines into the area. So we can provide power when needed on the distribution system. And so we, we think that that, that becomes very, that, that makes a lot of things more possible in the area. We know that there's a moratorium in place, been discussed. We understand that the largest, the biggest concern is health and safety issues. The New York, state of New York created an interagency working group, made a series of recommendations. I'm sure that those will be a big part of what the, the town board is considering. Just wanted to make it clear in the discussion at this point, one of the reasons why we're willing to sign, to, to go ahead with the evaluation during the moratorium period is that we had designed with assumption that we would incorporate all of the recommendations that we could into our design. You know, that, that you'll bring in a, a peer review expert to evaluate the safety of the system that, you know, the manufacturer's already got, and a lot of the explosion control, and all the way the cabinets are designed, and the exhausting of, of gas. You know, the requirement under that, that they want to have someone who can be here within four hours. We anticipate that would be much closer. We can put signage to explain everything, both at the facility, and you saw how our design was, that we're back off the property, but also at the, at the entrance level. Easy security monitoring of the, of the facility. We would, we typically on, on any project as well, like before these recommendations, put together emergency response plan before the, the commissioning would come in. You know, we've had, we've already initiated conversations with the Mohegan Fire Department on this project to get their input on our design.
Let me cut you off for a second.
Sure.
So the first thing I got to ask, and I don't see it on any of these maps, is you got a, an active bike path right next to the property line there. I don't see it anywhere. So you got a.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Parkland.
Trail there, right?
Park, right next to the property line here. I don't see it in any one of these drawings.
Okay, I'm, I'll, we'll, we'll make note to go back and look at that, because I was unaware of that. I did not. I did not notice it.
Go ahead.
And then I have, I have a question. I, I know you haven't put the site, or if you put the site map up, you've got floodplain here identified, and part of the, one of the battery packs seems to be sitting in a flood hazard area. And you've identified three different types of flood issues here, and I would like you to address how you can cite something like this in a flood hazard area. You've got a floodway area, a floodway line, and a flood hazard area. Why did you decide to put your battery pack in the flood area?
We haven't. We actually avoided those areas by putting, that's why our batteries are here, if you can see on the drawing.
I can see the drawing.
The line is right there.
Your line cuts that battery pack in half.
FHA.
FHA. No, I'm, I want to know what FHA is. You put it in there.
Yeah. You see, I'm going to let my expert on this topic-
Okay, thank you.
Uh, come in.
Jumped out at me, though. Hi.
Hi.
Tell us your name, please.
I'm Alexa Moreno, so I have a permitting project manager with Rick Energy.
Thank you.
In charge of all the floodplain stuff, so. So, let me see. So, what you're seeing there, that FHA, that line that's going through the system?
Yeah.
That's your shaded X-zone and your unshaded X-zone. The unshaded is-
Explain it to us.
Yes. The X-zone is the 500-year flood. So, that's not regulated by FEMA. That's above the 500-year, 0.2% annual chance flood. The special flood hazard area is the Zone AE, which is closer to the pond, which is completely avoided.
Given what I've been seeing about weather lately, I don't you think we, we should revise the location a little bit to eliminate all the risks?
So, you pulled this info, information off the FEMA maps?
Yes.
Okay. And how old are the FEMA maps now?
These ones were actually relatively new. This was, I believe, a 2011 firm panel that was, which in comparison is pretty recent.
13 years old? Right.
I think so.
And over the last, at least since we've been up here in that area?
There's floods.
Yeah.
Considerably.
Is there a setback from a park?
There's not.
No.
There's no setback? So, we have a-
There's, there's, there's setbacks from property line. Normal setbacks, but not additional from a park, if you're next to a park.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, you can slide it, you can slide it more into the corner, couldn't you?
What do you mean, closer to the, closer to Old Yorktown?
Yeah.
It's floating between two districts now.
Just slide it down.
Into the residential?
Slide it this way.
Do you have an AE zone on the property? What's the flood elevation?
I don't know if it's determined.
Isn't the AE-
Yeah, that means it is.
We could ask for a certificate of elevation.
I would just, I would just do some-
Whatever you say.
Yeah.
I just spotted it. I don't know what the technical end of it is.
Is Dan still around? Is he downstairs or?
Well, I don't, we don't have to necessarily solve it tonight. We can just identify it.
I figured if it was-
Free application, so we appreciate your comments on things that you'd like more detail on for, for when the formal application is made.
Come back with something.
This is a concerning area.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, I, I think we would ask, especially with the, the residents, for a certificate of elevation to see exactly what we're dealing with here. I think there's a lot more to be shown on here. Are the setback from the wetland, the DEC wetland, was that done in the field? Was that?
Yeah, it's, was, was field delineated and then confirmed by the DEC with a site visit.
Got to be confirmed by Yorktown as well.
Yeah.
At some point.
This is one I would definitely want to see out in the field. Hi, it's Dan.
Yeah.
Speaking of devil, and the devil showed up here. Dan, you got one sec? So, are you familiar with the, the proposal, the battery proposal?
Yeah, I mean, I took a quick look at the, the application.
Are you familiar with the, the flood zones in that area?
Yeah.
And this seems to float in between?
Well, where they're proposing it isn't in the floodway, which is really a no-go. You got to stay out of that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Once you get in, it is an area where FEMA did do the detailed modeling, so elevations are established. And as you get into the 100 and the 500-year flood zones, it's, it isn't an absolute prohibition, but you need to, whatever you do there, you have to build it in such a way that it, it's not prone to damage from floodwaters.
What if we just moved it further over?
I mean, you could, you could move it, or you could, you know, the pad that it sits on could, could be elevated, you know, and, and put a factor of safety on it to put it, make sure all the equipment's, you know, at least a foot or more above the established flood elevation.
So, that's something that needs to be developed.
Yeah.
Studied.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, you don't want to sanction doing something-
Right.
That's, has a probability at some point, and, you know, certainly, you know, with some of the storms we're seeing, because the FEMA flood maps, hydraulically, you know, they model all the bridges. Really, nothing much has changed downstream from there. But one could argue the weather has, you know, and that's, and that's the, this is the level you're up against.
All right, so, I think this would be appropriate for a site visit?
We ready for that?
I think it's probably-
We-
You answer a lot of questions, I think, early on.
We agree.
I have a problem going out there. You?
Sooner the better.
Yeah, we should go out there, sure. Okay.
All right, so-
You let us know.
Yep. Be in touch with Rob.
And just by way of backing, I don't, I'm sure most of you recall, back in, I think it was 2020, the town adopted a new code. It was very smart. It adopted everything that NYSERDA suggested, and then some.
Right.
Your existing code includes all of the things that, that NYSERDA suggested, and then some on top of that, the commissioning plan, the decommissioning plan, the reviews, the third-party reviews, the setbacks, the limitations of, you know, the inline zoning code, all of that. We're well aware of that. We haven't submitted all of those documents yet, because we did want to get this initial feedback, which I think was valuable. I think the site visit will be very valuable. And I think as the town board works through the, whatever code changes they find, particularly based on the governor's task for, task force recommendations, as Andy indicated, we're willing, you know, to be able to comply with those as well. So, we look forward to working with you on this project.
Okay.
See you out in the field.
Thank you.
Motion to close the meeting.